Good morning and welcome to the public hearing for the 2021 marijuana bill and technical package. My name is Anthony Galtoski and I'm a policy analyst for the Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission. Today is December 20th, 2021 at approximately 10:00 a.m. This public hearing is being held virtually in a schedule to end at noon. The purpose of a public hearing is to give interested persons a reasonable opportunity to submit data and/or personal comments prior to the adoption of permanent rulemaking. This morning's hearing is being held in accordance with Chapter 183 of the Oregon Revised Statutes, otherwise known as the Administrative Procedures Act, Division 1 of Chapter 845 of the Commission's Administrative Rules in Division 1 of Chapter 137 of the Oregon Administrative Rules, otherwise known as the Model Rules of Administrative Procedure. Consequently, please be advised that today's meeting hearing is being recorded. At this time, we have 66 individuals signed up to provide comment. If you are interested in providing comments but not have yet signed up, please email us at olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov. If there is remaining time at the end of the meeting, we will open it up to those of you who have not previously signed up. In the case that there is extra time, we will respond to your request with an audio link. If you wish to submit written comments after today's hearing, you may do so, provided that all submissions are received by 5:00 p.m. on December 22nd, 2021. You may submit written comments by emailing olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov. In accordance with OAR 1370010040, all public comments received on this matter, whether in the form of written documents or oral testimony, will become part of the permanent rulemaking record. That said, I will proceed with a summary. The Oregon Legislature passed Senate Bills 408 and 96, and House Bills 3000 and 2519 at the 2021 legislative sessions. These bills have effective dates of January 1st, 2022, and required amendments to Chapter 845 Oregon Administrative Rules. Changes to these rules also include technical changes to address errors in the rules and update requirements to ensure continued viable operation of the regulated marijuana program. As a reminder, this testimony is only related to the OLCC's rulemaking. It is not related to laws that have been passed. Lastly, this hearing is an opportunity for dialogue and not a conversation. OLCC staff will not be responding to testimony. If you do have questions about the rules, you can email olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov. At this time, we have 66 people signed up to give testimony. If you are interested in speaking, please email us at olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov. Now for a little bit of ground rules about the testimony. Please be respectful and mute your phone or computer when you are not providing testimony. I will be calling on speakers. At that time, please unmute yourself. Given the number of people speaking today, we are asking that speakers be aware of the length of their comments to ensure that we are able to hear from as many people as possible. Due to the volume of speakers, each speaker is asked to limit their testimony to two minutes. When 20 seconds is remaining, I will hold a card to the screen indicating you have 20 seconds remaining. If there is remaining time after each person has offered their comments, we will circle back to speakers who need more time. Before you begin, please state your name and affiliation. As stated in the notice, we will close this meeting five minutes after the last oral comment has been recorded into the record. To provide comment, please email us at olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov. I will now take testimony. And if I mispronounce your name, my apologies. The first person we have signed up to speak is Courtney Moran, followed by Chris Losacker. Courtney?
All right. Good morning. Thank you so much for having me. I'll try to keep it to two minutes. Courtney Moran, on behalf of the Oregon Industrial and Farmers Association. The Oregon Industrial and Farmers Association, OHFA, respectfully request that the commission reject the proposed rules as drafted, modify the rules as recommended, and amend the effective dates of the proposed implementation on the prohibitions of sales of artificially derived cannabinoids and new total THC concentration serving size limits to July 1 of 2023, and provide 18 months for industry stakeholders to come into compliance. OHFA worked intimately on Health Bill 3000, and these proposed rules go beyond legislative intent by extending restrictions and retail prohibitions to non-intoxicating cannabinoids and hemp products. We fully understand the gravity of consumer safety concerns. However, these proposed rules go beyond addressing consumer safety, and if adopted, will stifle hemp businesses both in Oregon and those that sell into Oregon without any scientific justification. Oregon farmers are struggling enough as it is. Since 2019, we have seen a decline in the number of registered acres by 87%. Additionally, the market prices for hemp have plummeted. From October of 2020 to April of 2021, there's been a decline of 63% in the value of CBD. These rules limit consumers' access to non-intoxicating hemp-derived cannabinoid products, which will result in increased cost to consumers and also result in unintended negative environmental impacts. Specifically regarding the new restrictions on artificially derived cannabinoids in 845 025 1310 and 845 026 0404, unreasonably ban all artificially derived cannabinoids, whether intoxicating or not. The proposed regulation of artificially derived non-intoxicating cannabinoids should be rejected in favor of a regulatory framework that requires purity standards, processing standards, and creates a framework to establish serving size limitations for each non-intoxicating artificially cannabinoid. We support the sentiments contained in the coalition letter that was submitted on the 17th, and we ask that you look to those for those recommendations. Further, we note that the requirements outlined in 1310/1C regarding submission of brass determination or providing a FDA response letter to a grass notice or an FDA letter of acknowledgement with no objections to a new dietary ingredient submission at this time is unreasonable. It's publicly known that FDA is not approving or acknowledging grass or NDI submissions, and as such, it's an insurmountable requirement and unreasonable for our industry at this time. In regards to total THC concentration limits in hemp products under OAR 845 025 2760 and OAR 845 026 0400, OHFA sees these proposed total THC concentration limits for general market sales of hemp products as the re-criminalization of hemp. These proposed concentration limits are arbitrary. They are not based on law. They are not based in math, and they are not based in science. These proposed limits are more restrictive than the federal 0.3% THC threshold for legal hemp, and mathematically, it equates to this. Hopefully, you can all see this. The conversion rates for products are 1 ounce, which is equal to 30 milliliters, which is equal to 30 milligrams, and therefore 30,000 milligrams. 0.3% of 30,000 milligrams is 90 milligrams. That's what's legally allowed in 1 ounce at this time. As such, if we break that down to a ratio of milligrams per gram, that is 3 milligrams per gram, and that is what we are advocating for, for a container limit setting. So we recommend that the table in OAR 026 0400 is revised to have a 3-milligram-per-gram limit for products sold in the general market. With a 3-milligram-per-gram of total Delta-9 THC allowance, the container size does not matter. The formulation would be required to meet this 3-milligram-per-gram limit regardless of that container size. This is compliant with the 2018 Farm Bill and the amendment of 475B 254B in Health Bill 3000, Section 6. Please note, OHFA is not advocating here for the allowance of pure total THC products in the general market or pure optical isomers of Delta-9 THC. We advocate for hemp-derived products that include full-spectrum products that contain other non-intoxicating cannabinoids. If OLCC feels the need to add a clarifying rule specifically stating that products cannot be in the general market that appear total THC, we do not object to that. We would like to see that 3-milligram-per-gram limit carried forward, and as such, we also amend the table for the products sold into the retail dispensaries, which will be in our written comments, and we also update the serving size based on that 3-milligrams-per-gram. OHFA also objects to the proposed restriction on package size of tinctures to a maximum of four fluid ounces. As proposed, while we understand that this definition of hemp tincture does reflect the definition of cannabinoid tincture in OAR 0115, applying this to hemp is burdensome and inconsistent with existing products and practices in the general market. It restricts consumers' access and will create undue financial burdens not only on our industry stakeholders but on those consumers as well. We recommend updated serving sizes for 2-milligrams for hemp edibles, 3-milligrams for hemp transdermal patches, 2-milligrams for hemp capsules, and 2-milligrams for other cannabinoid products. These recommended servings-
Courtney, I apologize for interrupting, but if we could please limit the testimony to two minutes so we can get everybody's testimony, and today that would be fantastic.
I have one paragraph left. These serving sizes are in line with what other comments you're going to hear today. They provide for just over a third of the current adult-use serving size of 5-milligrams, a fifth of the proposed adult-use serving size of 10-milligrams, and we see these serving size limit recommendations and the 3-milligram-per-gram container concentration limit recommendations as reasonable and not creating any direct competition for adult-use cannabis. And most importantly here, we object to the proposed blanket $10,000 civil penalty for each violation of ORS 475B 254 as provided for in Sub 407. As these proposed serving sizes and concentration limits are unreasonably low, provide for little variance in lab results, and having one fine for any violation rather than a category system will unduly punish good actors who may have a slight variance in the allowable limits to a truly bad actor with a flagrant violation of allowable limits. We recommend a category system to delineate civil penalties for noncompliance similar to what is proposed in 845 025 3320/6, which provides for categories of violations for 0.3 to 1%, and then those above 1%. Thank you for our testimony. The rest of our comments will be submitted in writing. Thank you.
Up next, we have Chris Losacker. Chris, are you on? Not seeing Chris. Megan Wallstatter? Gabe Parton-Lee?
Hi, my name is Gabe Parton-Lee. Thank you so much, commissioners and staff members, for taking the time to listen to public comments today. As Courtney briefly mentioned, we've submitted a coalition letter that's signed on by 24 operators, law firms, and industry associations in the state of Oregon, directly challenging these proposed regulation of artificially derived cannabinoids. I'm here to refer back to that comment. Nor, in general, and briefly, HB3000 does not intend for a wholesale ban on artificially derived cannabinoids. It intends for a regulatory framework to be put into place. We suggested an alternative regulatory framework that separates intoxicating artificially derived cannabinoids versus non-intoxicating cannabinoids such as CBN. It's a significant market driver in the United States as well as in Oregon, both in the general grocery market as well as in the retail marijuana market. We have been operating in the retail marijuana market in seven different states as well as nationally throughout the U.S. in our wild CBD brand, and our CBN gummy is the most popular gummy that exists. At this time, you know, the open-ended wholesale ban on CBN expiring or imposed within six months on the general market, 12 months on the open market or on the retail market, is absolutely unacceptable to us. It's 20% on our THC revenue, 30% on our CBD revenue, and it's the quality standards that the OLCC asks for, as Courtney mentioned, are legally impossible at this point until federal legalization or a change in the FDA stance, which could take anywhere between 2 to 20 years. Additionally, you know, we want to, you know, we would also offer as an alternative, an 18-month implementation date for any of the regulations associated with artificially derived cannabinoids. This allows opportunities for operators to get into compliance as well as go through toxicology tests that are necessary to prove the health and safety. We've offered processing purity and food manufacturing standards for CBN products and other non-intoxicating cannabinoids. Additionally, I'd like to add on that with regard to the 100-milligram package limit for THC products, that rather than having a sunrise date of July 1st of 2022, move back to April 1st of 2022. The HB3000, or the legislature at least, asked for January 1st, 2022, to be the implementation date, but due to smaller operators needing to get into compliance, it makes sense that it be extended out. Should be April 1st of 2022 to get products on the market as well as accommodate the operators that have already started transitioning over to produce 100-milligram products. And the OLCC should be accepting packaging and labeling amendments as of January 1st so that everybody can line up on time for the actual implementation date to start. And finally, I would also like to reiterate Courtney's comments relating to the $10,000 fine. It's an unreasonable burden, and it's based in, you know, from my read, it's based off of the FDA's adulteration, at least with regard to hemp products. It's a major fine based off of adulterated products, and there's no proof that any of these cannabinoids have a poisonous, toxic, or deleterious impact on human health. None of this is backed by evidence-based studies, and we would ask that the time and the effort be given to allow that the sufficient evidence be presented, science be presented and followed, and to follow the HB3000 task force that's intended to be created in order to assist in the regulatory framework.
If you have time, we can circle back.
I appreciate it. That's all for today. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Megan, I believe you're having some technical difficulties, and just a reminder, folks, two minutes, please, because we have quite a lot of people to get into this two hours. Thank you.
Okay. Hi. Thank you, OLCC commissioners, directors, marks, and staff for this opportunity to speak this morning. My name's Megan Wallstatter. I am the interim director of the Oregon Cannabis Association, the oldest cannabis trade association in Oregon. We represent a diverse amount of licensed holders and ancillary businesses. I also own a Tier 1 production license since in Coacamas County. The OCA welcomes the rules that help move the industry forward, including the new edible concentration limits, product transfers between license types within a common ownership, allowing producers to transfer concentrates and extracts made from their material back to processors, and many more. However, there are still some areas that need to be improved. We encourage the OLCC to continue working with the industry to ensure that licensees operate compliantly without undue constraints with a timely, effective process designed to promote safety rather than punish minor violations excessively. We would like the OLCC to remove the rule calling for a 10-milligram edible serving to be scored, allow edibles under 55-milligrams to still use the serving chart on their packaging, and changing the proposed sunset date to April 1st, 2022. Finally, the ban on artificially derived cannabinoids would limit Oregon's ability to lead the nation in new product innovation, the companies with products already on shelves on the OLCC and non-OLCC retail shelves. As a result, Oregon stands to the chance of losing legacy brands due to the need to relocate to other states that will allow CBN products to remain in hemp and cannabis markets. We strongly urge the commission to reconsider pulling the CBN products from the non-OLCC retail shelves, allowing for an 18-month approval for future artificially derived cannabinoids, and limiting its ability for future approval through the GRAS program. I have highlighted these issues in more detail in my written testimony. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Megan. Up next, we have Christine Smith.
Can you hear me? Does that work? Hi, my name is Christine Smith. I'm the founder and CEO of Group Confections, one of the oldest and largest edible manufacturers here in Oregon. In addition to the testimony I'm providing today, I'd like to direct your attention to the full written testimony that has been submitted to the record regarding draft rule OAR 845 026 0210, Table 1, which specifically prohibits the 100-milligram THC edibles coming to market until July 1st, 2022. I respectfully request that the OLCC reinstate the previous version of the proposed rule increasing the THC limit effective January 1, 2022. I have two primary concerns I'd like to raise. First, the OLCC does not have the authority to specifically prohibit the 100-milligram edible limit. HB3000 clearly mandates that the OLCC adopt rules that must allow for concentration of up to 100-milligrams of THC per package as of January 1st. Nowhere in HB3000 does the legislature grant OLCC the authority to prohibit products for time period beyond January 1st, either six days, six months, or even six years. Even more, the final draft rules include changes to increase potency limits for other products such as transdermal patches, suppositories, concentrates, and extracts, leaving edibles as a single category that is prohibited for an additional six-month time. Secondly, and perhaps most frustrating to me personally, is that the OLCC staff prohibition is completely arbitrary. The initial draft version of the rules considered at both the industry working group on August 24th and the October 5th RAC meeting did not contain any reference to a six-month prohibition, and no party publicly mentioned any such thing during or after the meeting. It was until approximately one month ago in mid-November that the final draft rules were released in written format with the proposed implementation date shifting out six months. OLCC's surprise six-month prohibition is challenging at best and unbelievably detrimental at worst for larger edible companies that operate at scale. We produce products based on a 90- to 120-day forecast and began planning for this transition months ago. I stand here before you in complete limbo. The last-minute proposed prohibition has required us to completely reverse course, piling up further expenditures upon those already wasted. Furthermore, this prohibition is entirely unnecessary. A return to the originally proposed January 1 implementation date would not prejudice or disadvantage any license. It does not prohibit licenses from continuing to manufacture 50-milligram edibles. Conversely, 100-milligram edibles promotes more options and is in line with what retail and consumer demand needs.
Christine, would you mind concluding your comments? Thank you.
Considering the above, OLCC staff cannot point to reasonable justification for this prohibition. It serves no public safety purpose and no agency resource management purpose. It interferes with the free market and hinders the industry in general. Thank you for your time.
Dylan Summers, you are next.
Well, thank you for your time. My name is Dylan Summers. I'm speaking on behalf of Lazarus Naturals. We're an Oregon and Washington-based to-be product manufacturer with our headquarters here in Portland, Oregon, farms in central Oregon. A lot of the points that I was going to address, I intend to address in this public comment. Thank you for the opportunity to give this public comment. A lot of those have been addressed rather eloquently, and for the interest of time, I'd like to just kind of boil them down to three major points. Overall, we ask that these rules be rejected as written. I'm not entirely partial to any sort of timeline here from, you know, just outright rejection. There's a lot of work to be done. I think the biggest piece of this is that, you know, the rules that came down that we promulgated for this purpose here today, we're just way outside the scope of the legislative intent, rather surprising on every front, you know, working with through the process of HB3000 and trying to negotiate all I could for hemp at the time. These rules aren't necessarily representative of those conversations, and there were a lot of liberties taken by OLCC and a lot of oversteps. And so I just wanted to make three major hot points here with the two minutes that I have. One, the definition of the adult-use cannabis item and the rollout of the restrictions to 0.5-milligram threshold has caused a lot of confusion in the industry. I ask that we possibly retract that for the time being and come together and form some sort of more fleshed out. We have launched that. It's the folks in the industry, buyers, every turn, just return to the same old, "I'm not terribly comfortable with this, and I don't know what to do here. We just need some clear guidance." And the 0.5-milligram imposition, that concentration imposition restriction is terribly frustrating. So if we could just readdress that. Two, the THC concentrations in the tables is outlined by OAR 845 026 0400. I won't be the first one. I won't be the last one to say that where these figures came from are rather unknown. I have my ideas, but they certainly don't seem to be found based in any science or any research. Terribly restrictive, and they stand to really limit the products that people are already making. Hard-working folks here, all on the call here, that are, you know, hard-working folks making these products that were up to this point legal and should continue to be legal according to federal and current Oregon state law.
Sorry to interject. Would you mind just concluding your statement? Thank you.
Yep, yep. So I'll just end with this. The table is the really the biggest piece of concern, although the, and I'll flesh those out in my written comment, but I just wanted to make one last point before we go here. The definition of artificial cannabinoids is overly broad, and it implicates some products that aren't necessarily, that don't pose any threats in products, and certainly there isn't any, there isn't substantial safety data to suggest that. So I ask that artificial cannabinoids definitions be reworked, specifics of that be fleshed out to include some of these non-intoxicating and undangerous products. And with that, I'll pass it on to the next person. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dylan. Up next, we have Kelly O'Connor.
Hi, thank you for having me, everyone. So my name's Kelly O'Connor, and I represent Columbia Laboratories today. Columbia Laboratories has been conducting environmental and nutritional analysis for the last 35 years here in Oregon, and we were one of the very first to get certified for recreational cannabis testing as well here in Oregon. So we've done quite a bit of work in the last couple of years, working with the open market hemp and CBD industries, both here in Oregon nationally as well as the OLCC-regulated cannabis market. Been doing a lot of work as well federally and providing services that are applicable to multiple states' testing needs per the regulations for various cannabis products. So in that work, we have seen a lot of effort to put forth public safety as the primary consideration for regulating artificially derived cannabinoids as well as defining an adult-use cannabis item for any type of toxicology or intoxicating considerations. However, we do think that there's still work to be done to make sure that we are still preserving the sanctity of the open market access for all of the cannabis companies who, as Dylan just said, were operating legally until these rules were drafted, but considering the public safety considerations at the forefront. The total THC concentrations, the numbers are somewhat arbitrary and not in line with the federal regulations, and so we do encourage that for the total THC concentrations to consider the 3% total concentration and reverting back to 3-milligrams per 3 grams would be our recommendation there. We do encourage the task force for HB3000 to continue forward. I think there's a lot of resources that we can use with our neighbors in Washington working on the same issues as well, so I'd like to see that develop. And for the artificially derived cannabinoids, we do support the coalition letter that was submitted on the 17th regarding CBN and other artificially derived cannabinoids and how those are regulated into the market. We encourage a science-based approach. The definitions that have been put forth, both for adult-use cannabis item and artificially derived cannabinoids, do have some arbitrary nomenclature rather than science-based terminology and percentages and facts. So there is a written response as follow-up with some of those details for you all, but I do think there is still work to be done, and we are essentially putting quite a few companies that have been longstanding companies in Oregon, putting them out of business or out of the state, and reducing the strength of the hemp industry in Oregon by putting these laws into effect. We do support the grace period as well for enacting any of these.
Just concluding your testimony. Thank you.
Yep, and we would make that the 18-month grace period as well to get these put into law. So look forward to the written comments as well. Thank you guys all so much for your hard work.
Thank you, Kelly. Up next, we have Nick Shown.
Yeah, I'm right here. Hi, thank you for having this platform available. Able Hemp is my company. We make full-spectrum CBD products. And yeah, so serving size of 1-milligram THC per serving is just not gonna, sorry, sorry, I'm losing my notes. I would like to object to that serving size. The National Institute of Drug Addiction has stated that a single serving size of THC is 5-milligrams for research purposes. I think it's, 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 1-milligram is very low, and compromise needs to be had. I believe that 2-milligrams of THC per serving is a reasonable amount, and I'd like to see that adjusted. You know, as a full-spectrum product, we champion a small amount of THC inside of our products. And because we believe that they do make them more effective, we believe that adults should be given the opportunity to make that decision for themselves and not have the LLC regulate to such a strong stance. to such a strong stance. The THC servings per container is, we believe, is going to create a situation within the industry that is going to push us to use smaller vessels, which is going to increase our our carbon footprint throughout the industry. This goes directly against Governor Kate Brown's ordinance to, or not ordinance, sorry. It goes directly against Governor Kate Brown's goal to reduce carbon emissions throughout the entire state. Using smaller containers is definitely going to increase costs, both to the consumer, to the producer, and also have a negative impact on our planet. We would like to see for container size, .3% be readopted, as that's what it was stated at through the federal government in the 2018 Farm Bill. So that means 3mg per gram. Yep, and last thing is the $10,000 fine, the blanket $10,000 fine, we also believe is unreasonable and should be adjusted on a different scale. Thank you for providing this time.
Thank you, Nick. And I just want to say that I understand everybody feels very passionate and has a lot to say on these rules, but we have 66 people to get through in two hours. So, you know, I'm not trying to rush people through their testimony. Liz Kasser, are you on? Jesse Bonnequie.
Hello. For the record, Jesse Bonnequie, I'm the co-director of the Oregon Retailers of Cannabis Association. We represent over 500 business licenses, 500 businesses in the state of Oregon of every license type, including ancillary businesses that serve the industry. Thank you to the commission for taking the time to listen deeply to this and for the staff working through very hard conditions to put all this together. I just want to start off with a general comment of please, please pay attention to the written comments, especially those submitted by the Cannabis Working Group, working on violation reclassification and loss-of-control changes, and the work group that's working on artificially-derived cannabinoids and those new regulations. There's been a ton of time and work by the industry putting into the written comments of those organizations, and the impact of those changes on the industry is massive and for many people destructive. So please take the time to deeply look at those written comments. In general, I want to preside a frame for what we're looking at as an industry. The simple goal of ORCA is to create a thriving, respected, legal cannabis industry. And when we are looking at the situation of the industry now, it is barely surviving. It is not thriving. And so we are incredibly happy with the positive changes in here, but they often seem to be matched with detractions and changes that are harmful and costly and damaging to the industry. And if we take one step forward to only take one step backwards, we're not moving forward. And if our industry is just thriving when it comes to, or just surviving when it comes to national legalization, we will not thrive at all. I want to ask you to pay especially close attention to the violation reclassification, and then in edibles to scoring, that is very costly for folks. We strongly recommend that people look at having requiring scoring for 10-milligram items or less. But please take the time to look at the recommendations, because if done wrong, we could severely damage the ability of this industry to compete nationally. Thank you for your time and energy today, and please do really look at how this will negatively, how some of these potential changes will negatively impact the industry.
Thank you, Jesse. And what I'm going to start doing is just saying time, the 20 seconds, and then time when it's up, just to get things moving along here. Up next, we have Rochelle Coach. Jackson Haney.
Hello.
We can hear you.
Okay, awesome, wonderful. Hi, Jackson Haney here. Thank you for letting me take some time. I want to appeal to you from the heart. We started our hemp business in a garage with a dream, and it's become quite large now. Oregon is our number-one producer and supplier of all of our hemp, and with these new regulations that are proposed, will essentially put us out of business. Some of these include the CBN regulations, the serving sizes, as well as the artificially-derived Isomer ban that goes into effect relatively soon. We ask that you consider extending the artificially-derived Isomer, you know, deadline, as well as keeping CBN legal and keeping packaged serving sizes somewhat the way they are. I think everybody on this call is open to compromise, and but the way that these are written right now, it will put us out of business completely, as well as the 12 employees that we have. So just appealing you from my heart, I beg you, please don't get this wrong. It's going to have national consequences, and we're really, really counting on you and just pray that you listen and hear what we're saying. This is not based in any kind of scientific data that is being proposed. Once again, we understand that things need to change and compromise needs to happen, but the way that these are written currently will have a terrible effect on us and lose quite a few of our employees, as well as downsize, if not go out of business when we barely are in business after all of the reductions in licensing that has been applied for and all the struggles we've been through. It's been hard enough in the hemp industry. I don't think we need extra challenges. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackson. Up next, we have Ally Lindquist.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Ally.
Hi, my name is Alay Lindquist. I'm the CEO of FloraWorks. We are the primary supplier of CBN for the Oregon market, and we are a research and development company focused on minor cannabinoids that have significant or meaningful health benefits that have not yet been discovered. CBN is the first molecule that we've come across that has significant potential for people, which is obviously why it is being so heavily consumed at this point. We participated in the coalition letter, so I definitely ask that you please review that. But we propose rules, request that the current rules be rejected and that the rules in the letter be adopted. I also believe that the definition of artificially-derived cannabinoids is overly broad. It basically covers cannabinoids that occur naturally, exist naturally. It doesn't differentiate between intoxicating and non-intoxicating, and it also includes cannabinoid-like structures that are not naturally occurring cannabinoids that would be, I guess, fall into a category of research chemical. That's very broad. Those definitely should not be put into the same category. I'm not sure how to approach that, but I do believe we need to look at that definition and make changes there. Overall, these rules set Oregon back. They stifle innovation, and they don't allow Oregon to be a leader in how this industry kind of moves forward. Again, I ask you, take a look at the letter. We propose additional rules or changes to the rules and ask you to reject the current rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Beau Whitney.
So my name is Beau Whitney, founder, chief economist at Whitney Economics. Whitney Economics does not take a position on these proposed rule sets. However, I wanted to provide some data for contextualization. Hemp production in the United States is down 55% since 2019. The prices of extracts have declined 92% to 95% since July of 2019. Much of this decline in acres and price has resulted in the lack of access to markets and political and regulatory uncertainty. Investors are seeing too much regulatory uncertainty and therefore too much risk. Example of the impact of this is the $9.9 billion decline in the extract value of the capacity in the United States. In Oregon, acres have declined 87% since 2019, going from 128 million pounds of capacity to 15 million pounds. The value of this crop was once the most valuable crop in the agricultural sector in Oregon, at $55 million, and is now worth $220,000. Current proposed limits would only further generate regulatory uncertainty and exacerbate the decline in the hemp industry in Oregon. The proposed limits on serving size and container limits only add cost to an already stressed industry with little proven benefit. The rules also are run contrary to Governor Brown's executive order 20-04 on reduction of environmental impact and potentially conflicts with the OHA Board of Pharmacy Authority. In addition to the impacts on cannabinoids, this also impacts, potentially impacts, the fiber and grain sector. This would impact a multimillion-dollar hemp campus in Primeville, limit the ability to utilize as a rotational farmers in eastern Oregon as rotational crop, and also impacts national policy on hemp. So with so many potential consequences negative, it is difficult to justify the proposed rules contained in this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Beau. Up next, we have Jonathan Staffelt.
Good morning. Thank you, commissioners, for hosting this hearing allowing testimony. My name is Jonathan Staffelt. I am in-house counsel at GBB Biopharma. We're a cultivation, bulk, and finished-good manufacturing company based in Oregon. We've been around since about 2017. I do want to echo Ms. Moran's and Mr. Lee's comments and support the letter that was sent, the testimony that was sent on behalf of the coalition. To be clear, GBB and I think everyone here fully supports consumer safety as a top priority. It's necessary to maintain the integrity of the hemp industry. But I think it's also important to realize there is a regulatory balance to be reached that will protect consumers while still allowing industry to flourish, which right now, industry certainly is not flourishing. The rules go, the rules as proposed, go beyond what is necessary to protect consumers, both in connection with the artificially-derived cannabinoid prohibitions and the THC limits. I'm just going to speak quickly, directly about the artificially-derived cannabinoid portions of the rules. As proposed, most of those cannabinoids will find a very difficult time being allowed into the Oregon market. In accordance with the coalition testimony, GBB supports having purity standards and processing standards for those artificially-derived cannabinoids. I believe the O L C C has always had two concerns, which should be alleviated by using that formula, which is eliminating intoxicating and, if you will, adulterated artificially-derived cannabinoids. In other words, not putting unsafe products on the market. I think that approach takes care of that while not making it nearly impossible to bring in new cannabinoids, which is a big thing that we're talking about now, you know, CBN, CBC. There are tens, if not, you know, possibly even the hundreds of new cannabinoids that are going to be developed. And Oregon should be promoting the development and manufacturing of those products. The hemp and hemp-drive industry moves very quickly, and leaders in the industry who are working to make new exciting cannabinoids that have tremendous health benefits will be attracted to states that are not imposing unnecessary regulatory roadblocks, and it really does...
Just mind concluding your comments. Thank you.
I'll stop there and say, worst case, we support the 18-month grace period, but we will support the coalition letter for purity and process standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Rick Trojan. Are you on, Rick? Not seeing Rick. We have Drew Spiegel. And I'm not seeing Drew as well. Joseph Hurska.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Joseph.
All right, perfect. I am the trade show coordinator for Oasis Farms, and it's been a fun journey, and it just, to me, seems like this is a nationwide product, and we'd really be setting Oregon back. The products will still be made in other states. So I really want Oregon to be an industry leader, especially in the hemp market. It's just, we're out of Medford, Oregon. It's just so much of what we do there, and this would really be devastating. So please keep in mind with the Oregon Industrial Hemp Farmers Association letter that's sent in, and if nothing else, at least the 180-day grace period. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joseph. Up next, we do have Michael Freeman. Michael?
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak and allowing others to speak as well. I guess I'll get straight to the point. By allowing this bill to go through, fully through, I will lose my job, and thousands of others will lose their job. This is pretty damaging all around for this industry and for myself. To me, it's pretty hard to get my mind wrapped around it for something that is federally legal and for something that already has strict laws. It overall does not make sense to me. So I just, you know, once again, go back to the point. By allowing this to fully go through, losing my job and thousands of others will lose their job is something to really take the time and step back and actually listen to what everybody is saying here and to review this and reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we have Adam Harder. Adam?
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Adam.
Okay, thank you so much for holding this meeting, and I won't take up too much of your time. I'll just echo the sentiments of Courtney, my partner, Jackson, fellow coworkers, Joseph and Michael. These rules need to be rewritten as they're currently stated. They're going to do nothing but create undue financial hardship for the entire industry, which has already seen exponential contractions since I've been in it in 2017 on. It's going to penalize all the farmers and the businesses who have been doing nothing but trying to comply since the beginning. It's inconsistent with our existing product. It's going to require entire reformulations and repackaging, so we need extra time. It bans non-existing artificially-derived cannabinoids. It sets arbitrary thresholds, and it limits our hard-quality products and everything we've been working for for all these years. And yeah, I'll just keep it at that, and thanks for your time and thanks for holding this session.
Thank you, Adam. Up next, we have Nick Murray. Nick? Not seeing Nick. Up next, we have Jake from... Jake? And I'm not seeing Jake. Do we have Art Almazan? Not seeing Art either. Do we have Phil Swindells? Not seeing Phil either. Robert Stevenson? Not seeing Roberts. Austin Treheo? Not seeing Austin. Drake Bowers? Not seeing Drake. Justin Tombe?
Hi, this is Justin. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Justin. Go ahead.
Excellent. Hey, I just want to make a quick note about the difficulty of this platform. I've been exited twice and had to log back in and noticed that at least two of the names that you've called were on the call at earlier times. So maybe you might want to roll call back through folks at the very end to see if they were able to join back on. Just wanted to note that. Well, thanks for taking the time to listen to stakeholders in the industry. I'm the CEO of Phytonics, we're a seed producer and provider for hemp farmers here in Oregon and around the country. I've worked with hundreds of hemp farmers here in Oregon over the last five years. I know a lot of them aren't able to join this call, but they all have very deep interest in the outcome of these proposed rules. You've heard from the OIHFA, some really cogent analysis that I want you to pay careful attention to. I know that this is a difficult industry to figure out how to get a regulatory wraparound. But the approach here is arbitrary. It absolutely is an overreach of the original legislative intent. And I'm sure it's well-meaning. We agree. We also want to make sure to safeguard consumer and safety, consumer safety and product safety. But there needs to be some serious reconsideration here. Otherwise, the industry that was once poised in Oregon to be a leader in the nation and the world is not only going to lose that positioning, but is going to be irrevocably damaged. I hear this all the time with our customers, who are also people that we just have built relationships with over the last five years. They care. They're hardworking. They love this industry. They love the plant. And you need to be mindful of the impact that this is going to have on them. So obviously, you've heard that the definitions around artificially derived cannabinoids are arbitrary. They're not based on science. They don't distinguish between intoxicating and non-intoxicating. That needs to be corrected before being implemented 100%. Also, the limits on total THC need to be consistent with federal law as from the 218 Farm Bill. This is just excellent, cut and dry clear. So at minimum, the 18 months is a grace period for implementation. Also needs to include time for reconsideration. Really appreciate you guys again, listening to the stakeholders here. Understand that this is having tremendous negative impact on farmers that aren't able to be here on this call as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Justin. And for the folks that were not here when I called, I am keeping a running list and we'll recircle back to you once I've gone through the list. Right now, we are on number 29 of, I believe, 65. Up next, we have Bonnie Jo Peterson. Bonnie? Bonnie, if you're speaking, we can hear you. I do see you're unmuted.
Okay, so I did get the camera's still not working yet. So we'll see if that pops in here. Thank you, everybody. I'm Bonnie Jo Peterson. I'm the Vice President and Co-Founder of the Association of Western Hemp Professionals, based out of Oregon, as well as the Industrial Hemp Association of Washington, Executive Director and Founder. And I am testifying today on behalf of members of the Association of Western Hemp Professionals. And as mentioned many times throughout the testimony this morning, that this will have a huge impact on the whole entire supply chain from the farmers to the actually to the end users that rely specifically on some of the full spectrum products that our members produce. It's so really, keeping it brief, my ask in the Association of Western Hemp Professionals ask is to take everything that's not specifically mandated for the January 1st implementation of these rules to be given to the task force and to use a scientific-based collaboration to move forward with these rules. With the 0.3% concentration limits staying in place while this is determined through science and the task force will eliminate a lot of the issues that these rules will cause. The three grams, three milligrams per gram concentration that's mentioned without a container limit keeps to that 3%. We're eliminating that column from the chart suggested. If there's which serving size, again, the three milligrams based on 0.3%. And then the specifics of having the violations that 10,000 for people that are 10% of 0.3 is unconscionable. And that needs to be looked at very specifically for people that are doing their best and people that are having continually issues with production. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bonnie Jo. Up next, we have Maureen McGee.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Maureen.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Maureen McGee and I am speaking today on behalf of the U.S. Hemp Roundtable. The Roundtable is the industry's leading national advocacy organization for safe and legal CBD and hemp products, representing nearly 100 firms and organizations from across the country at each link of the hemp supply and sales chain, including seven firms and organizations based in Oregon. The Roundtable strongly supports the legislative intent behind House Bill 3000. Intoxicating cannabis products should not be sold at retail nor to minors, but rather only through adult-use cannabis channels. However, we respectfully request that OLCC pause this rulemaking. We are concerned that the proposed rules go far beyond what is necessary to implement House Bill 3000 and sweeten non-intoxicating hemp products into a regulatory regime that is inconsistent with the market for safe, non-intoxicating hemp products and that it would set harmful precedent. We submitted written comments on December 13th that outline our major concerns. And I will speak today to three points where we hope to seek common ground with the Commission. The General Counsel for the Hemp Roundtable, Jonathan Miller, is also registered to testify. And he will particularly address the response to comments that we received in a December 17th letter from the OLCC. First, as stated in our comments, the Roundtable is open to per-serving and per-package Delta-9 THC concentration limits for products sold to adults at retail. However, we are concerned that the threshold set by OLCC for certain adult hemp products will require unnecessary reformulation and repackaging, will increase packaging waste and will unreasonably limit consumer access. And we urge the OLCC to continue adopting the reasonable revisions in our comments. Second, the rules place an unreasonable wholesale ban on artificially derived cannabinoids. And we recommend the rules be revised to only prohibit intoxicating artificially derived cannabinoids and hemp products. Finally, the rule definition of hemp tincture should be revised to permit the use of added sweeteners marketplace and the realities of how these items are consumed. We are concerned that these rules without revision will play undue financial hardship on responsible hemp manufacturers and hemp farmers who are already struggling. And we will soon be submitting data that we have collected from the industry, showing the potential negative impacts of these rules. We, in conclusion, we urge the OLCC to pause this rulemaking and to refocus its effort on narrowly tailored rules that effectuate the intent of House Bill 3000. And we look forward to coordinating with the agency in that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Up next, we have Rosie Almazan. Rosie? Not seeing Rosie. Up next, we have Jonathan Miller.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Jonathan.
Good morning. I'm Jonathan Miller, General Counsel of the U.S. Hemp Roundtable. For years, the U.S. Hemp Roundtable's policy advocacy has been built around one strong principle proposition. Hemp products sold in the general marketplace must be non-intoxicating. Intoxicating cannabis products must be kept away from children and limited to adult-use channels. We've led the battle in state legislatures across the country to crack down on the retail sale of intoxicating products such as Delta-8. And have been working on federal legislation to adjust the 2018 Farm Bill's definition to address this theme. That's why we take strong exception to the OLCC's December 17th letter that unfairly suggested not only do we support the sale of intoxicating products at retail, but that we support their sale to children. We strongly oppose the sale of any intoxicating products to children. The point we were attempting to make clear in our comments is that the OLCC's half a milligram THC limit is impractical and may be even impossible to validate and enforce. We're not aware of any labs that can test to such a low level. And that the 0.5 limit would inadvertently sweep in even broad-spectrum products that have non-detectable levels of THC, simply because there isn't access to the required testing. That being said, OLCC has made its position quite clear on this issue. So in the interest of pursuing a productive dialogue, we'll instead focus our energies on addressing the challenges posed by OLCC's proposed rules to products sold to adults in the general marketplace. As OLCC discusses in its December 17th letter, "Science shows that a threshold dose of THC for the average adult is two and a half milligrams THC. All five milligrams might produce a high intensity. That's why we use the more conservative two milligrams per serving as the intoxication threshold." OLCC is focused on the prospects of abuse of people taking multiple servings of products contrary to the directions on the package. But its own standards could be abused as well. In a worst-case scenario, even under the OLCC's threshold, the individual could purchase 10 tincture bottles of 10 packages of gummies and ingest them in one sitting. But there's no evidence of that. In fact, as we demonstrated in the survey, we comply from the industry. Products are being sold across the country with very rare of any incidents that reflect the threshold we propose. Indeed, while the FDA and states have issued warnings about abuses of intoxicating Delta-8 products, we are not aware of any such incidents concerning non-intoxicating full-spectrum products. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next, we have Reed Stewart. Reed? Not seeing Reed. Jonathan, would you mind muting yourself? Thank you. Next, we have Lorna Lyons.
Good morning. I'm Lorna Lyons and I am, pardon? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, I am the Assistant Secretary to the Oregon Industrial Hemp Farmers Association's Board. I've been in that position since 2017. And so I've been talking with farmers and hearing about their concerns and the lead-up into the optimism of 2019, that they felt like this could be a crop that would save their farms. And now so many have fled and we are now I'm hearing from people that there's a deep concern that these regulations, if they go into effect, will drive them out of business, as you've been hearing. But I also want to take a moment as the Oregon Regional Co-Lead for the U.S. Hemp Building Association, because I'm concerned about some unintended consequences from what is being proposed with these regulations. The USHBA is working right now to get regulation for the, to get Hemp Creek put into the ICC building codes so that people can easily be permitted and get to start building healthier buildings. And so we can build this industry in Oregon and develop the workforce of plasterers and builders to create these naturally fire-resistant, I think it will be proven to be fireproof, but we're not quite there yet, mold-resistant homes with healthier air quality. And they're highly insulated and sequestering all that carbon. So the problem is that to be competitive economically to create that, you need local farmers growing hemp and local processing centers. And there's being a chill on the processors because they have to take the risk to pay for these huge centers in Oregon, which they're not going to do if they can't trust that there's a CBD market. So please, I ask you to just learn more about the unintended consequences of other economic drivers and jobs in Oregon that hemp represents. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorna. Up next on the list, we have Alexander Dimitrov. Alexander? Not seeing Alexander. Josh Gulliver? Not seeing Josh either. Cliff Thomason? I believe I saw you earlier, Cliff. Are you still here?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here.
All right. Go ahead.
Cliff Thomason, Oregon Industrial Hemp Farmers Association. Since 2015, the Oregon Industrial Hemp Farmers Association has been a leader in crafting legislation and getting it passed to make Oregon the most progressive hemp state in the United States. The rulemaking behind House Bill 3000 only serves to undermine five, six years of effort. And it's clearly not in the intent when it was written. We have submitted several points into the record. And most importantly, you know, is on this 0.3% THC level in the open market or three milligrams per gram. And in the original 2014 as well as 2018 Farm Bill, legislation was written. The 0.3% THC came about on a dry weight basis, which is out of the farm, without any regard to concentration of that hemp, creating larger amounts of cannabinoids specifically to this conversation THC. Nationwide, it's been generally adopted that the 0.3% THC goes across all types of products and concentrates that are created through the, you know, extract process. You know, so I think that, you know, it's important that when we're looking at the concentration limit, that we maintain, you know, that 0.3% regardless of container size in regards to artificially derived cannabinoids. You know, that's again, you know, something that is just being creative out of, you know, whole cloth when we're looking at, you know, so many cannabinoids, minor cannabinoids that are being produced and should still be able to be produced and without the limitations if they're non-intoxicating. So let's not take people off the open market and CBD and otherwise and put them into the black market. I understand that's a concern with a lot of lawmakers, especially with the illegal growth of illegal marijuana. Let's not do it at the expense of, you know, honor hard-working hemp farmers, processors and retailers. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Up next, we have Farhanaz Wadia. Chad Roberts. Chad, are you here? Up next, we have Adam Kurtz. Adam?
Yes, Adam Kurtz, Fusion Holding Group. Good morning, OLCC Commissioners, Policy Leaders and Hemp Stakeholders. As co-founder in Oregon Fusion and Fusion CBD, a multi-state hemp producer and manufacturer, I'm here today opposing your current proposed rules for cannabinoid hemp products. Fusion will need to reformulate our products that utilize full-spectrum hemp extract and also remove our larger volume packaging to meet the proposed THC milligram cap. This will add increased expenses yet again to an already challenged industry. Also, the ban on artificially derived cannabinoids will likely affect our CBN products, which will significantly decrease revenue. As the proposed limit stands, these concentration limits are against the 0.3% THC federal limit currently allowed. Our customers have become accustomed to our full-spectrum hemp products since 2016 and we have never changed our formula. We are not promoting for pure THC hemp products, but to allow the amount of THC to be in relationship to CBD as is extracted from the plant and produced into final goods. I urge OLCC to reconsider these limits so that the Oregon hemp industry can stay competitive locally, regionally and in a national landscape. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Next, we have Kelly Thomas. Thomas Fokes. Thomas?
Hi, Anthony. Thank you. And maybe since we've had so many people drop off, I can get a few of their minutes too. too.
We'll circle back because we do have some more folks that have signed up during the hearing, so.
Okay, okay. Well, let me jump in. I'll go right to it. So I applaud your guys' effort to create the Table 1, 2760, creating an avenue for hemp products to be sold into the OLLCC. I think in the effort, just from a broad, broad kind of outlook, cannabis has provided safer alternative in America to, you know, a lot of the harsher realities of addiction in America since the 60s, 70s, 80s, and 90s. Heroin addiction, methamphetamines, alcoholism, cocaine, and now fentanyl. So I applaud everything the OLLCC does. I think high THC cannabis is a shining light. It provides a lot of value in people's lives and, you know, for... There's a lot of business interests on this phone call, and I think everybody on the call knows your true loyalties are to citizens of Oregon. That's your constituency. And so I'm going to speak directly to Table 1 of 400. I think beyond what we have federally on our regulatory framework for hemp .3% THC, this goes beyond that framework. And so I see it as a small business owner. I've been a handler for three years. I've been a member of OH, Oregon Industrial Hemp Farmer Association for three years. And to further the arc of cannabis and the value that it creates for the constituency of Oregon, beyond that arc, on that arc of progress, low THC cannabis is a continuation of a healthier alternative. Like, not only is it, it's a non-intoxicating, less habit-forming, less impairing for motor vehicles, safer alternative. So to do anything to thwart this blossoming young industry and everything that Oregon has built up as a brand for hemp is detrimental, not only to the wider, broader future vision of what low THC cannabis can be as a safer alternative for the constituents of Oregon, to clamp down on the business owners, to make it less practicable, less viable for us to create products in the marketplace that are a safer alternative on a broad, broad macro vision, is not truly being loyal to the constituency. And I know you have a lot of business owners. We're all business interests on this call, lawyers and owners. But truly, the most important, widest, most value you could create to the constituents of Oregon is to not clamp down on the hemp industry and impose the further restrictions in Table 1 on a milligram basis that goes beyond the federal legislation. I truly believe in my heart that a continuation of cannabis in the marketplace is to lower THC, less intoxicating, less impairing, less habit-forming. So truly, in the long run, I think we have an incredible opportunity to allow for something to continue on the progress, the arc of progress. Thanks.
Thank you, Thomas. Up next, we have Logan Brown. Logan? Not seeing Logan. Up next, we have Mike Stodder.
Yes, Mike Stodder, the owner of St. Helen's Hemp Works out of St. Helens, Oregon. We're a certified organic, full-spectrum CO2 extractor and consumer safety has always been important to us, testing. We've been testing that meets the 3,000 rules since 2018. But the regulation on the .3 is really going to be detrimental to our business for sure. There's almost no way to sell wholesale hemp extract or even the flower. The pricing is just plummeted and there is no money in it. The only way to make money in this industry is to make these products. If you start restricting them even further from the .3, you know, we just, we have a capsule right now that is .3, that your new rules would restrict it to three capsules per bottle. We've got bottles of 30 and 60, and we would just like to, you know, reject these rules as they're written. And, you know, please don't restrict the hemp products beyond the federal laws of .3 per serving or the container. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we have Kelly Su.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me on the call. I've been in the industry as a hemp handler. This is my third year. It's been tough. I know all the rules and regulations and changes. I've been able, through a pandemic, as a, you know, self, my only, you know, person that owns the company, a woman. I have 14 employees. You know, I work every day, 12-plus hours a day, keeping my business going and growing. These new regulations, they simply shut me out. You know, I'll have to relocate and try to pick it up somewhere else in a more friendly state where they're going to let, you know, hemp flourish. It just seems like we've lost a lot of growth, sales and farmers are declining, and I feel like we have an opportunity to rebuild and really do it right. You know, I am an Oregonian, third generation, and I'd like to stay in this state and help the industry and community thrive. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Kelly. Next, we have Jeffrey Guido.
Thank you, Anthony. Yeah, I think, my name is Jeffrey Guido. I'm here today to testify on behalf of Oregon Integrated Labs in Southern Oregon. And I think some basics would be, point out, I think that we all can agree that federally legal hemp is not intoxicating, right? I mean, I'm just trying to find some ways that we all can agree. And secondly, that I'll agree that everyone on this call understands the state's legal authority to act under its emergency rulemaking authority, which protects the public from new and future unknown compounds. And I definitely believe that we often get behind that these new and future unknown compounds and any potential psychoactive compounds over the legal limit should not be allowed in the state. That's what we're all at court talking about. But the position, I think many on the other end of the table here have is that Oregon to be the vanguard state of the union to address the issue of these compounds in a way that places an undue burden on Oregon hemp farmers with legislation that, at least in our opinion, treats Oregon hemp farmers unconstitutionally on the state and federal level by being both overbroad and arbitrary to achieve the stated means to its ends, regulating far beyond the Federal Hemp Farming Act. And frankly, in an area that the federal government should be leading in the regulation, the Oregon bill is written, especially Section 17, will severely affect the farmers and is our opinion that the unintended consequences of this bill
Twenty seconds.
will be to punish Oregon farmers and severely affect the Oregon hemp industry as a whole in treating these farmers differently than other farmers of legal agricultural products with this legislation that is so overbroad that it treats the crop presumptively illegal. Oregon's always been a pro-agricultural state, a pro-farmers, pro-business. Thank you.
Up next, we have Mary Wolf. Mary, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. So I'd like to speak on the retail adult-use cannabis concentration and serving limits. Table 1 from OAR 8450260210. So I'd like to advocate for the serving size of edibles to transition from five-milligram THC to 10-milligram THC as the maximum concentration increases to 100-milligram THC, to be consistent with surrounding states as well as the proposed serving size increases for capsules and transdermal patches. The most important thing a serving size does is to create consistency for consumers. And I believe as we transition to 100-milligram THC, the 10-milligram THC serving size will give us the greatest consistency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Up next, we have Jason Evans.
Good morning. Thanks for having us. We've been... This is Jason Evans, Tweedle Farms. We've been a industrial hemp grower and handler under the ODA program since 2016. As well, we've been a member of the Oregon Industrial Hemp Farmer Association. We have since day one followed every rule and regulation put before us. When Oregon went to total THC, we pivoted well ahead of everyone else and had followed that regulation. Throughout the explosion of artificially derived cannabinoids, we have not sold Delta-8 or, under the guise of legal hemp-derived Delta-9, we have not sold anything. We have never grown, produced, or sold anything intended to intoxicate a consuming public because we are not under OLLCC regulation. So while we have taken that hit to follow the rules, we also feel that the pending OLLCC regulations are prohibitive, and I would refer back to Courtney Moran's statements and her submissions. That said, I would like to also just point out quickly, OLLCC has plenty of... OLLCC has plenty of framework for non-intoxicating products, and I'll point you towards kombucha, which is a fermented product that is non-intoxicating and still allowed outside of a regulatory adult-use framework. So I'll leave it with that. But I just, I... As a farmer who has followed every regulation, this new proposed regulation oversteps its bounds and will put us out of business.
Thank you, Jason. Next, we have Danny Angalucci. Danny? Not seeing Danny. We have another Danny, Danny Sheridan. Charlie? And not seeing Charlie. Matt Gompers. Matt, are you on? Not seeing Matt. Next, we have Kun Nan Yu. And we have a person from RDSP Farms, Dylan. Nikolai Nikolov. How about Jason Youngkin? Jason? How about Chelsea Kentone? Chelsea? Chelsea, I see you're unmuting, but we can't hear you. I can try and come back to you, and if you can message me, we can get you scheduled when your audio is working. Next?
Hello, my name is Drake. Hello, my name is Drake Bowers. I was called earlier. I apologize for having issues. I'll keep this short and sweet. I'm probably on a flight right now. But I hope you, again, thank you for your time and thank you for allowing us to do this. But I hope you do reconsider in at least an extension and reconsider and stay within the lines of federal laws. I would lose my job. A lot of my friends and associates within this industry would lose their jobs. And I just hope you reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Jonathan Cook. Jonathan?
Hi there. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to testify here. My name's Jonathan Cook, and I'm managing partner of Optio Consulting and Residence Farm. We're a hemp handler and a small business here in Oregon that's been in the industry since 2016, mainly focused on growing and establishing a vertically integrated company producing mainly CBD and CBG oil tinctures. This bill would definitely have a negative impact on our business by changing rules and making it very difficult and expensive for us to adapt, especially such short notice. Want to refer back to some of the points that Courtney Moran made. It would create an undue financial hardship on the industry and consumers. Hemp industry is already experiencing dramatic declines. It essentially unreasonably bans non-intoxicating artificially derived cannabinoids. And I think the biggest thing is restricting beyond the .3 THC federal threshold for legal hemp. I just want to urge you all to reconsider and also just want to take note, that's really interesting, there's been zero testimony in favor of these proposed rules. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next, we have Alex Berger.
Alex? My name is Alex Berger. I'm an attorney with Emerge Law Group, and I've been asked to testify on behalf of Grune Chocolate LLC against the proposed ban on artificially derived cannabinoids, including CBD. I just want to raise and emphasize some, a few key issues regarding this proposed ban. In terms of public health, CBN occurs naturally in the plant. Artificially derived CBN is no different. A molecule is a molecule. And OLLCC has shown no evidence of harm coming from CBN products. As far as I know, there are no reports of adverse health outcomes from CBN consumption. CBN can be processed with demonstrably fewer impurities than OLLCC-compliant CBD and THC products, which are currently on the regulated market and in grocery stores. If OLLCC... If OLLCC moves forward with this proposed ban, consumers will be forced into the black market, and they will be buying untested and potentially unsafe products, which is contrary to OLLCC's duty as a regulator, and which is probably why, to my knowledge, no other state is proposing to outlaw non-intoxicating cannabinoids such as CBN. And I just want to draw a quick analogy to the vaping crisis of 2018 and 2019. Unlike CBN, unregulated vapes were causing significant harm to consumers' health, including, in some cases, death. But ultimately, OLLCC regulated rather than banned flavored vapes, and now there is a robust and safe, regulated flavored vape industry. Compare CBN, which has no reports of adverse health effects, and now OLLCC is proposing to ban, which makes no logical sense. Last thing I want to say is, in terms of the proposed six-month... The proposed six-month delay in imposing the ban, although that would soften the blow, it would still be a last resort. It is not a compromise and would only delay the demise of this new and vital industry. And so I encourage the commission to review the coalition's public comment that was submitted December 16th. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. I'm going to go to Chelsea Kentone, who was having technical issues. Chelsea, can you try now?
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much.
Hi, thank you so much for having this forum, I represent a small family hemp farmer and processor. I would like to echo the sentiments of Courtney Moran and the Oregon Industrial Hemp Farmers Group that the retail. THC limits for industrial hemp products would be extremely detrimental to our business to the effect of. Potentially putting us out of business, I would just like to read some science into this record. In January of last year, Dr. Chen, a research plant breeder from Oregon CBD. Found that by feeding a CBDase synthase, the gene that produces. CBD in the plant, a diet of CBG. CBDase was produced at a rate of 23 parts to one part THC. This means this is the natural ratio of full spectrum type three hemp plant wants to grow cannabinoids at. As farmers, we still remain compliant by pulling our plants at the point three limit. But this full spectrum THC limit will drastically reduce the amount of THC that can be in our products. We do not produce intoxicating products, we only want to produce products that represent the plant that we grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Next, we have Chris Shirley, Chris, are you on?
Yes, I am. Like you, thank everybody for being here today, I'd like to touch on a few things. We are a hemp genetic farm here in Oregon, we have an international footprint, our primary. Customer base is here in the state of Oregon. The, I'd like to go on the record that these regulations are overreaching and unjust on a compared to the federal level. I think the board needs to take into consideration the testing that goes on on a national level is inconsistent on all levels. Even ORLAP accredited labs. They are not consistent in their reporting and to make restrictive, more restrictive testing guidelines. In which the market will see is going to continue to hinder the market here in the state of Oregon and extinguish. A once thriving hemp industry that Oregon has been known for for many years. This is also going to continue to cause demise for employment across the state. For a lot of families who depend on the hemp industry and a time in which employment is a big deal nowadays and. People that have jobs. Want to keep their jobs and these over restrictive guidelines are going to continue to tarnish the industry. We've done a lot of testing in the state, probably thousands of tests over the course of all the years being in business since 2018, we can factually show all the inconsistencies of all the ORLAP accredited labs. Testing the same exact sample, no lab will give a.
Twenty seconds.
Repetitive. Consistent test result, so becoming more restrictive while testing is inconsistent as well is going to just continue to lead the market demise. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and just who have signed up to provide testimony, you need to use the link that we emailed you, you cannot use the phone call in number. And once we are finished with going through the list, I will circle back and go back through chronologically and call on folks who were not here when I called. Next, we have Gus Hanger, Gus.
Hello.
We can hear you.
All right, perfect, hey, hey, Oregon. You know. The community right here is at the forefront of this industry. Now, let's not go back to the dark ages right now. I mean, all I can say is come on, Oregon. We're the most progressive state, guys. We're, we aren't trying to ban CBN or minors, are we trying to ban CBN or minors? We just have to clear the air. The state should be excited to see some of these minor cannabinoids, they're being commercialized. And they're benefiting the farmers, the entrepreneurs, look what we're bringing to consumers. Let's have these very minor cannabinoids be regulated by the Department of Agriculture. Wasn't this intended by the 2018 farm bill? Again, this is Gus, I'm with Plain Jane, I have 25 employees in Medford. You legislators made these jobs possible, I know you don't want to take that away. That's all, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Gus. Next, we have Greg Marchi, Marichi, excuse me, if I mispronounce your name, Greg. Not seeing Greg, next we have Becca and or Seth.
Hello. I'm with Nymphin Woodsman Wellness. We are small, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
We're just a small two person business, we are hemp farmers but also other herb farmers. And we grow native seed to restore local landscapes. Our CBD is a really important part of our business financially and serving our community, we have a high demand for it. And I just come to you as a really small scale farmer whose livelihood depends on. The rules that are in place right now, we've been complying with them all along and to have a more restrictive. THC content would destroy our CBD business, which would put us out of business. And when we are not in business, we can't support other local businesses and we believe that small, local. Land based businesses are the heartbeat of Oregon, so I hate to see the domino effect of. These regulations going forward, thank you for the opportunity to testify, I really hope you reconsider the proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Becca. Up next, we have Jay Markart, Jay. Not seeing Jay. And next, we have Paul Murdock, Paul.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Paul, go ahead.
Thank you. So my name's Paul Murdock, my family and I own and operate a farm, Horn Creek Hemp in Southern Oregon. We, I support, we support the testimony of Courtney Moran and so I think I'll take my time. And focus, you know, we've heard a lot about business owners and that's all. Very relevant, I want to speak up for the folks who use the products that we produce. I came to this industry after a fall off a roof, which was my own fault and very stupid. And I had at the time. Far too much access to opioids through prescriptions. The use of CBD was a tremendous help to me to not be reliant on opioids but instead use CBD products. Currently, my primary concern with the new legislation is this focus on CBN. I have absolutely no problem with regulating D8 and D9, but non intoxicating cannabinoids such as CBN. Would also hurt people who are using this for sleep issues and I would point out that. The alternative to the CBD that I began to use, which helped me. Was opioids, which we can all agree are not, not helpful. And the alternative to CBN, which a lot of people use, would be alcohol and a variety of other intoxicating substances. And so I would encourage the OLCC to focus on maintaining access for individuals who are using these cannabinoids for these purposes. And not arbitrarily deny them access, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next, we have Seth Moody. And once again, if you'd like to provide testimony, you have signed up, you need to use the link that we emailed you. Next is Mike Kirkwood.
Hi. Hi, this is Mike Kirkwood, I'm CEO of Angel Industries. CBN is good medicine for Oregon. Angel has been a first mover in bringing new cannabinoids into the OLCC since 2017 with both ODA and OLCC licenses. A quote from one of our users, thank you, after nine weeks of post-op of being unable to sleep more than one to two hours at a stretch at a night. The Z formula gave me six hours of uninterrupted sleep. I'm waiting to be scheduled for my next surgery, I'd like to continue to take this formula to deal with my post-op insomnia and continued chronic pain, thank you, Julia. We also have completed an observational trial on the use of CBN. In coordination with the HSAU and the results are very clear that CBN has a positive effect on people's sleep. We are a big fan of OLCC's framework for bringing in hemp from Oregon into the market, we feel it's the most safe place in the nation. To make sure that the products have been tested in both packaged and in bulk form. We've submitted written testimony to support our point of view that CBN should be excluded from this bill and language that supports that idea, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next on the list, we have Christine and or Jason.
Hi, this is Christine Walsh, I'm the co-owner of Edibles LLC. We own and operate a baked good product in the industry and have since 2017. We have respectfully submitted comments regarding the milligram dosage for edibles. From five milligrams to 10 milligrams in terms of working towards a model that's more in tune with surrounding states and what's happening federally. But one of the things that I think is most important here, we've heard lots of large voices, we've heard from lots of large brands, we've heard from coalitions, associations, round tables. And I'm here speaking from a very, very small business in the industry, we've struggled over the years. To stay relevant and to stay in the industry despite costly overregulation, sometimes re regulation. That renders our packaging unusable, changes our processes, changes our ingredients, our cost of goods. That we're able to provide and so I, I'm here to speak up for this voice. Which is kind of outside of the hemp issue that's taken a lot of the forum today. And say that in order for us to, we advocate for responsible regulation, of course, as does everybody, I think, that took the time to show the importance of working with the OLCC here today. We all want to protect the consumers, but I think that providing a flourishing cannabis industry in Oregon, no matter what our products are, is very important where small business can recognize success. We're really looking at these changes and these costly effects, you know, really closing our doors and so we would like to see the six months stay. So that we do have time to compete with the larger brands and we do have time to change our packaging and to order new packaging and to pay for it and to change our processes. And so I think it's important to keep in mind that small business voice as well, thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Next, we have Green Ridge, a name was not given, simply Green Ridge, if anybody is here from Green Ridge. Not seeing anyone, moving along to Luke White. Luke, I do see you're here. I can try circling back, Luke, I see that you're muted.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, thank you for letting us speak for a second. So my interpretation is the OLCC's job is to regulate products. In a sensible way and not just end entire industries, so I kind of have two points that I want to make. One is that I work at a medium sized fulfillment company in Medford and. All day, every day, there's homeless people walking back and forth up and down the street out here and. This would just put a big dent, a bigger dent than I think people would imagine in. Just people's livelihoods, so that's one main reason and another is. Maybe more importantly, it's taking thousands of safe products off the shelves for people who really do need them. And those are just the two main things I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Up next, we have Alex Forrestall, Alex.
Yep, I'm here, I'm here actually with my partner Art, we've been in the industry for the last five years now, part of Marshall Group LLC, we're hemp handler licensed. Kind of to piggyback on what Luke just said. You've taken away a lot of opportunities for people who want to work. As well as need to work. I don't know if Art was coming in here for a little bit.
Hi, my name's Art Almzon, I work with a sim company with Alex. And I've been in the valley for 14 years and I've seen the sun grow and go through a lot of things and I've seen the community in the hemp industry just bring each other together, I've seen families go from. Really hard times to a thriving environment and living better lives and I've seen it firsthand myself and. Taking this away from a lot of the people around here would just devastate and hurt the community more than it has been hurt by pandemic and the fires that we've gone through, but yeah.
And then just a little bit more on my end. Sorry, someone just stepped in, actually you guys stepped out here quick, that's, that's it for now, but we appreciate the time, thank you so much.
Thank you, Alex and Art, we appreciate it. Last on the list is Dave from Wana Brands, Dave.
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Dave.
Wonderful, thank you, OLCC commissioners for having the meeting and bringing us all together. Excuse me, I represent Wana Brands, while we are an MSO, we are 100% dedicated to the. Wellbeing of the Oregon market. I want to echo my support for the brothers and sisters in the CBD side of things. With the prohibitive restrictions on CBN and whatnot, I would on behalf of want to ask that you reconsider that. As well as reconsider the six month moratorium on new product because I want to echo the enthusiasm of the earlier caller. Who was talking about how Oregon is so progressive and it is. And I think we need to be the pioneers on that end and give more people a chance to provide the wellness that we all take so much pride in providing. And that comes through innovation, the old saying innovate or die. So we have a whole slew of new products that we want to bring to market and we want to bring them to market sooner than July and with the underlying. Need for, you know, providing that wellness that some other speakers have talked about and providing another avenue rather than. More harmful products in the market, so we're all in it together, I hope that you at the OLCC reconsider some of those prohibitive. CBN regulations and move up permitting and control studies for the 100 milligram switch sooner than later and with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. What I'm going to do now is I'm going to read chronologically back through the folks that I called on that did not. Respond, but I want to note that if you do have written comments to make, you can make those. To olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov, that period closes on Wednesday by 5pm. So I'm going to go back through the list and I've got Chris Losacker, Chris. I've got Rick Trojan. I've got Rick Trojan. Drew Spiegel. Jake Fromm. Phil Swindells. Robert Stevenson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Robert.
Yeah, hi, my name is Robert Stevenson. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'll keep this short. I just wanted to say that I reject the rules as they are written. And I just, I need to say, like, if the bill passes, me and at least four others in the company I work for, we'll, we'll all be out of jobs. And just after listening to everybody speak today, I've heard at least 50 plus people speak negatively about this bill. And this is just going to affect everybody in the industry and a lot of personal lives. Who is this bill supposed to be protecting at this point? You know, I just, I need to, I ask once more, just please review the letter sent to you by the Oregon Industrial Hemp Farmers Association. And thank you so much for giving me the time to speak today.
Thank you, Robert. Next, we have Austin Trejo. Austin?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Austin.
All right, thank you. I wanted to thank you guys for your time today. And I also wanted to piggyback on some other things that people have said, mainly Alex and Art and Luke as well. I work with them personally. And I just wanted to say that I also reject the bill as it's written. I just think without having, you know, these products that people depend on, I think it would have a major impact on the community itself. And not only that, the people that, kind of as Rob said as well, that work in the industry that, you know, it's a means that they provide for their family with. And I just think without, you know, without that, it really puts a lot of people out. Not only the community and the people that depend on it for using the products, also the people that work in the industry as well. And I, I just, that's what I wanted to say today. And I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
Next is Josh Gulliver. Josh? Not seeing Josh. Fernaz Wadia. Chad Roberts. Adam Kurtz. Kelly Thomas. Logan Brown. Danny Anglucci. Danny Sheridan. Charlie Christensen. Matt Gompers. Kun Nan Yu. Rec Stratten. Thomas, folks, I just saw your mic unmute. Are you there? We can try coming back to you, Thomas. Dylan from RDSP Farms. Dylan?
Yep.
Hey Dylan, if you'd like to go ahead.
Sure, yeah, sorry for showing up a little late to this. Effectively, we'll keep it brief, but the, the OLCC, when they came in to assist the ODA for testing, that was at least what we as farmers were heard, that, that OLCC was the regulating body to help overflow for testing. And then they quickly became the regularly regulating body for standardization, which as farmers, when OLCC came in and kind of, I guess, effectively took over for the ODA, we knew it was a terrible idea. The same regulating body that regulates alcohol and traditional cannabis in the state to also regulate hemp made no sense to us. And we knew that this was going to be a problem. And then now here we have this kind of a blitzkrieg of a rule change when we all thought that we're going to be at 1%. The reality is the genetics aren't there to support a 1% total THC threshold. So effectively by doing it, moving it to a 0.3 threshold, you're going to be putting every hemp farmer or hemp related business out of business, bar two genetics. Unless you want us to just effectively monocrop in the state of Oregon, we have no other options. Not only is it a financial impact on the farming community in the state of Oregon and the businesses that are also related to the farming community in the state of Oregon, is also basically affecting the right to farm state and status that we have in the state of Oregon. Why would any other ODA regulated crop, which, which we still are? Why would any other ODA regulated crop be under different jurisdiction than the ODA? So that's, that's my testify or my testimony, I should say, as to why this is not only impactful but harmful to the farmers in the state of Oregon. Hemp has been saving grace for many farmers who can't actually afford to farm in the state just because of what's going on with land, land grabs and what's going on with water issues. Hemp has been an option, a viable option to save our families. And that is now being effectively stripped from us if this point, this 0.3 total THC ruling becomes standardization.
Thank you, Dylan.
Yeah.
Thomas, folks, I'll circle back to you one more time. I believe I saw you, but I can't tell if you're on now. Not seeing Thomas. Nikolai Nikolov? Nikolai? Jason Youngkin? Joy Beckerman? Greg Marchy?
Hey, how's it going? I tried to sign up and I was not able to. Is it possible that I would be able to speak?
Yes, Les, you can speak. Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. This is Les Ampel White. I've had zero time to prepare for this, so please bear with me. I'm just going to speak generally about, you know, we, we have made a lot of progress and we were hesitant to have the OLCC have any sort of control over the hemp industry. We felt that we should beef up the ODA to do what they were originally assigned to do. So on good faith, we did do that and Courtney Moran, you know, made compromise with them and we trusted them and we felt that going forward, they would respect that relationship. And clearly we're here now. We're trying to get, I mean, call it what it is. It's a sneak attack on the hemp industry, completely destroy it. It's shameful. It's going to have blowback specifically in Southern Oregon. A big reason for this is to try and eradicate illegal marijuana in a lot of ways. That was the big scare that kind of pushed this forward and the OLCC into this position that they're at now. The blowback that would be created if we were to strip the hemp industry and all this infrastructure for growing marijuana on scale would be real. It would further fuel and leave those facilities ripe for the picking for illicit marijuana growers. It would throw the economy in Southern Oregon down the tubes. It would be an absolute mistake on everybody's part that, that made this possible. It's, it's exactly the opposite of what we should be doing. Thankfully, we still have time to get back on track, trust reestablished and give this industry what it deserves. And that's a chance for growth. So I hope that
Twenty seconds.
all of the decision makers involved here realize the reality of what's actually happening and make the right decision. And I appreciate you guys' time. I missed it.
Thank you, Les. I have three more people to go through. Jay Markart. Jay? Seth Moody? And the last person I have that has signed up that I have not called on is Matt Cyrus. I see your message.
Yep, I'm here.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, my name is Matt Cyrus. My family owns and operates Triple C Farms and has raised hemp in Oregon since 2016. I'm the president of the Central Oregon Hemp Association as well as the Shutes County Farm Bureau. I'd like to support the comments submitted by Courtney Moran. I think they're very on track with the issues at hand. And in 2018, the farm bill legalized hemp and as such, legal hemp of not more than 0.3% THC should not fall under OLCC regulation. There should not be a container limit for THC. It serves no public good and only limits package sizes and creates more packaging waste. And it is not reasonable to ban synthesized cannabinoids outright. I have no objection to OLCC regulation of psychoactive compounds, but there's no reason to regulate other minor cannabinoids that can naturally occur that are non-psychoactive. And in the instant or in the interest of being timely, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Rochelle?
Hi there. My name is Rochelle Koch from Whole Circle Farms in Silverton, Oregon. We are a very small family farm. We got our first hemp license in 2016 and we've been part of this hemp industry from the beginning. As you can imagine, it's been a roller coaster trying to follow all the rules and regulations. We have to answer to ODA, OHA, OregonTale, USDA and OLCC. As a small family farmer, that is very difficult to do. There's no other crop that has this kind of regulation and trying to make a viable crop of products is becoming very difficult. We've always been very proud to be from Oregon as a state has always been extremely forward thinking. They've had their arms wide open for us to grow and sell hemp until now. Hemp industry's been experiencing dramatic declines in production and market value. The inconsistency with existing products and practices compared to these new laws would require complete reformulation of and repackaging of products for most companies and ours. For our company alone, the increase in environmental and financial impact due to additional packaging alone would be 10 times the cost. We have a 0.3 THC per serving size capsule with 30 capsules per bottle. These would then have to be placed with three capsules per bottle or package. If these laws are approved and many other products having to be discontinued or similar packaging issues, selling arbitrary intoxication thresholds and THC concentration level, concentration limits without scientific or verifiable evidence restricting container size beyond the 0.3% THC federal threshold for legal hemp will crush honest Oregon companies and limit consumer access to regulate, to regulated high quality products at lower prices. So thank you, and I do stand behind Courtney Moran's comments.
Thank you, Rochelle. Is there anybody on the call that has not already provided testimony that would like to provide testimony at this point? Commissioner Revol, did you want to provide testimony?
Thank you, Anthony. Hello, everyone. My name is Marvin Revol and I've been a commissioner for over eight years for the OLCC. First off, I want to assure you that we understand that over 90% of the businesses in Oregon have fewer than 50 employees. That means we know that this is a small exporter state. You also need to know, and particularly I want to address those of you who represent organizations, please relay my comments to the men and women in the businesses that you represent. We do not rubber stamp staff recommendations. We get to where we are today by having programs just like this. When we first got into the business, when OLCC and the men and women that you see here first arrived, we realized that those of you who are in the business know more about the business than we do. Believe it or not. After 20 years in law enforcement, I spent most of my time arresting people regarding marijuana. That doesn't mean I knew about marijuana. I simply arrested them because I didn't make the law. I simply enforced it. Over the last eight years, I have depended on men and women just like you to teach me about the industry, how it works. This, the new industry is regarded to hemp. You're teaching us how it works. We take the information that you give us right now. We go back to our staff. We look at the laws that we didn't pass. But we are given the responsibility to make the rules around them. And we have plenty of questions we're going to ask staff and DOJ how we implement rules around that. Understand this also, we do not make rules and regulations to placate large companies at the expense of small companies. That's something that we simply don't do. Sometimes it's hard to believe that anyone in a governmental situation is believable. I do that all the time. But I can assure you from my perspective, and I can only speak to you from my perspective, this is not a done deal. We're going to go back, get more information and try to come up with reasonable rules and regulations where necessary and stay out of your business when it's not necessary. I want to thank each of you for taking the time, putting yourself out there because it takes a lot to put yourself out there. We hear you. We have to make rules and regulations around this process and we hope to do so reasonably. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this point, is there anybody else that has signed up that would like to provide testimony that has not previously provided testimony? Thank you, and please remember that written comments must be received on December 22nd by the end of the day. That means 5:00 PM this Wednesday, written comments must be received to be considered during rulemaking. Please send those comments to olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov. Thank you for your interest and participation. That concludes our hearing.